I'm going to call this meeting to order, Board of Selectmen meeting, Monday, May 20th, at 7:01 PM. Please join me for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to skip down to three because I believe number two, the new town planner, is in another meeting right now.
Okay.
So we'll wait for her to come out so we can welcome her. Did everybody have a chance to read the meeting minutes from May 6, 2019? Any comments? Motion?
Motion to accept the minutes of the May 6 meeting.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Some correspondence here to go through. Notice of public hearing, we have on June 10th, at 7:15 PM at the Town Hall. It's a special permit review for a property at 11 Prospect Street in Millville. They're proposing a conversion from a two-family to a three-family. So that meeting will be held at June 10th, at 7:15 PM. The second notice public hearing, not exactly sure whether it's on our agenda, but I will go through it. It's for Town of Blackstone, not sure if they have a Butters. But this property is for 48 Carter Avenue in Blackstone. And actually, that hearing has passed, and that was May 15th, 7:00 PM, if anybody wants to go back and watch it. I believe that's it for, what, we have one more correspondence. Invitation from Blackstone Millville Regional High School, an invitation to attend the awards program on June 6, 2019, at 7:00 PM. And then also, there's an invitation for high school graduation at BMR, at 6:00 PM, June 7, at the high school. This is an invitation, I believe, to the Board of Selectmen. If anybody's interested in going, let me know. Thank you for the invitation. And I think that's it for correspondence, technically. Departments, Public Safety, would you like to come up? Chief, do you have anything on Snow Street? Any new information?
I do.
Okay. Good timing.
I did have the opportunity to speak to Mr. Thwatt today.
Okay.
His goal was to restrict trucking on Snow Street.
Mm-hmm.
And because we really can't do that, he wants to rescind his application or his petition to do anything with that street.
Okay.
Like to keep it the way it is.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that. So it's, it's him today, like I mentioned, that's what he wants to do.
Okay, so we'll take this as rescind of the Snow Street. And if anybody that signed it doesn't want to rescind, they can come forth.
Correct.
And make another argument. Do you want to stay here for your other items?
Talk about your bike.
About my bicycle.
Oh, yeah, we want to hear all about those new electric bicycles. They're very cool looking.
I'd like to give the credit to the Green Energy Committee. They had some funds left over in their grant.
Mm-hmm.
They're going to have to return those funds if they're not used. So we took the opportunity to use those funds. When I attended the seminar a couple of months ago in Lake City, I seen the local vendor out of Massachusetts selling these powered wheels that you attach to existing bicycles.
Mm-hmm.
Great idea for the town, for the bike trail. So we had the funds to buy them, and we did. And they're installed, and they'll be in use as soon as we get manpower to put them on the bike trail.
Okay, good.
Pretty neat.
Good, there it is.
You've seen them.
Yeah, I saw the video.
Yeah, they go about 25 miles an hour, they go about 50 miles.
Mm-hmm.
So it'll last all day. And the good thing is, generally Blaine, or maybe on the second shift, if they're using the bicycle, and they could actually get a call on that side of town.
Yeah.
They can respond, and they won't be winded when they get there.
Right, right.
So it's a good thing, and it was free.
Yeah.
So that's the best.
It's nice to have something that can actually go onto the bike path, to get down the bike path.
Yes, it goes, we can go up and down the bike path a million times a day. And like I said, if you have to respond to a call to back me up with somebody else, he can get there in minutes as well.
Perfect.
So it's a pretty good win, so thank you, Green Energy Committee.
What was the value on those?
The wheel itself is about $1,900 apiece, just for the wheel.
Right.
And the wheel can go on any bicycle, it's 29-inch.
Mm-hmm.
And they came, they installed the product, and I got to say, it's pretty impressive.
Mm-hmm.
I drove it, it works well, so I think it's a good fit, what we're going to use it for.
Especially in our little town.
Right.
That's awesome.
Really, it's during the day, following patrol, and Blaine's on the bike trail, he'd have to take the bicycle, drive down, pick up his Crozer, now he doesn't have to do that.
Right.
Now he can just zip along and get to the call.
Good.
So it should be good.
Thank you for the innovation.
Not having a heart attack on the way.
Exactly.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Good, thank you very much.
That's it.
I think that's it for you.
Great timing.
Well, I don't know. I don't know, Peter may have something for you later.
Reserve fund transfer.
Oh, yes, yes.
Is that you too?
For the replacement of the damaged slide for parks and recreation.
Thank you, Peter. I'm on the Epoxy Rec Committee as well.
Mm-hmm.
And the equipment for the park located behind the police station, it's older, it's getting brittle, it's plastic. So now and then, we find a piece damaged, and we found the slide damaged about two months ago. So we did call for a new slide, and it was approximately $800.
Mm-hmm.
So we did have some money left in our budget, so the request is for the difference, to purchase the slide.
Okay.
How much use does that get, Chief?
You know, surprisingly, it gets a lot of use.
Does it?
It gets more use than the one we recently constructed behind the school.
Mm-hmm.
That's because it's downtown. We have a lot of kids that go to a daycare center, they show up with the group. So overall, it's used quite a bit. It's really in need of an upgrade, there's some major renovations to it, that's going to be on our list eventually. All the chips, they're probably five inches below where they should be.
Right.
So you're starting to see all the concrete come up, which is a hazard in itself, so we're going to be putting something together to repair that.
Technically, that's probably our own town, the only town playground, right?
It is. The playground that was donated and installed in the school is a great playground.
Right.
But because it's situated off the beaten path.
Right.
Really, no one sees it, other than the school lets you know about it. So the one behind the playground, behind the police station is used on a regular basis.
Right. Especially when there are town events downtown.
Exactly. So it's used daily.
I have to say, every time I pull in, there's people, amazingly, to me, there's always somebody on that playground. Every time I pull in.
Really, that's why the slide's an important part of that playgroup. You know, without the slide, it's kind of a, the apparatus isn't used as much.
There's not a lot back there, so.
Right, so we need that slide.
Yeah. All right, so it's $739. You have $500 in your balance, so you need an additional $239.
That's good.
Can I have a motion from anybody to approve the $239 additional request?
So moved.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
So you would all sign that, and then we'll get that to the Selectmen's Committee.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Chief. Good to see you after your road trip today.
So Erica, the request on our agenda is 500, but is in fact $239.
It's $239.
I see $239.
Well.
Yeah, because, so Chief, it's.
Budget's 500.
You have 500, so the request is for additional $239, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
We have $500, we need $279.
Yeah, so that's a type one, the agenda.
No labor.
Good catch.
So we still have ourselves.
Okay, good.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Okay. Public forum, I don't want everybody to come up at once, no fighting over the mic tonight. So, anybody? All right. Under new business, we have the American Legion, Jeff Wing, he couldn't make it tonight, so we're going to postpone that to our next meeting, to present the proclamation to the town. So we'll move that to our June 3 meeting. I think that's our next meeting, right? June 3, yeah. Annual town meeting debriefing, did you want to save that for your section? Do you want to talk about it now? I know you want to kind of go through.
Yes, wherever you want to do it, I can do it now, and then.
Why don't we go through it now and give you a little break in between?
Sure. So I just thought, I added that in there just to, since we're right off of town meeting. And that was my, you know, one week in, I'll give you my observations and discussion and see whether, if there are any action items that you all might have. But just from my observations, you know, clearly, folks worked hard to prepare the budgets. Finance Committee worked very hard to understand the budgets and come up with their recommendations. I think they're, they gave a nice presentation to the town, they did it twice at their public hearings, and then they did it, you know, at the town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
They talked about wanting to level fund many budgets, you know. They certainly didn't level fund the school budgets, but they were clear about many of the other budgets, they were level funding with the objective to limit the free cash that was being used. So I thought that was fairly prudent. The town, of course, has the challenge of school, you know, you got Proposition 2 and a half allowing you to increase your budget by 120 grand, or thereabouts, and you got school coming in looking for twice that.
Right.
So you, the pie has to be shuffled around a bit, and that's always a challenge. I thought there were frankly few holds. I didn't know what to expect, but there weren't many holds, except the ones that were obvious, where there were differences between the Selectmen's recommendations and the Finance Committee. I thought the discussions by the folks were healthy, articulate, and, you know, people had done their homework and had clear thoughts in terms of what was important to them. In that, though, I, there was, I would call some confusion over whose budget is being presented. You know, it was clearly the Finance Committee's budget that people were presented and voted on. I call that confusion in terms of, if I look at the bylaws and what my responsibilities are under the bylaws, and what the Finance Committee's responsibilities are versus convention and past practice of the town. I think there's some sorting out yet to be had, next go-around. And, you know, I'm not saying that's any problem or anything like that, it's just, there was a slight confusion there, I thought. I thought the, one of the things that sort of took me back was the lack of funding for the conservation agent stipend or salary of 2,500 bucks.
Mm-hmm.
For a town that's dependent upon well water and septic, I just thought, wow. But turns out, that position is funded separately and grouped in the town administration, the admin salaries of the town. So turns out, it is already funded.
Okay.
But still, just the feeling that that was not needed in a well-water community did have me a little bit surprised. The other thing I would say is, I wonder about the value impact of some of the things. And by that, you can define value in many different ways. Community value, but even value of your homes, you know, real estate values can be impacted by the decisions that folks make on town meeting floor. So that just tells you, the voters are the most important people on that particular night in the community. And so the value conversation, I think, is something to have further on. For example, one of the staff met with me and wanted to know what I was thinking, and that's really where I went to. I said, "Does it add to the value as many ways you can define it would be the objective in terms of, do we pursue something legally, or we do some other, take some other steps?" I, I, there was a, on the budget, a request for, you know, additional funds for the highway department. And I was supportive of that, and, you know, in my update, you know, I took a nice road trip with Brian. But the more I thought about, the more I would prefer to get a handle on the Chapter 90 funds that are actually available and not yet used, and how we're prioritizing those. So that was just one of the line items that didn't get supported by the voters there. I know there was some discussion between, you know, regarding the police budget with, you know, one or more of the residents in the crowd. And it turns out, the chief told me afterwards, he went up to the main individual having that discussion, clarified some of the facts behind his budget, and I think that was a good, healthy conversation that he had with the resident and the resident, I think, furthered their understanding. That's, that's great. There was another comment by a really good-looking guy in this room right here regarding the health benefit line item in terms of, clearly, what was budgeted is just discreet to the identified individuals. And so there's, there's definitely exposure there.
Right.
And that's something to think about going forward. So I said I would be brief. I think.
Can I just ask you to pause for a moment?
Yeah.
And I don't know if you know the answer to this. I know the question was asked, is where does the money come from if another individual comes onto the health plan? Do you know the answer to that? We can still ask that question.
Well, I think that's a reserve fund transfer type of thing, perhaps.
Which we don't have a lot in there to begin with.
And there's not a lot there, that's right.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be my guess. I don't know where else that comes from off the top of my head. The town certainly has voted for healthy contributions to multiple stabilization funds, and did dry up or use up its free cash fairly significantly. From my experience in another community, we like to have about 3% of the budget in free cash at the end of the day, after we used everything, while still trying to achieve 5% to 8% of stabilization of free cash on hand and then some.
I would agree, absolutely.
And so I think where that will come out in the future is establishing financial policies for the town. And, you know, I have a couple of different communities' financial policies, that's a task that, working with the Finance Committee and you folks, perhaps we can all get on the same page with how best to use those sorts of things. And so that's my take of the town meeting.
I appreciate your insight, especially because technically, really, a third party at this point in time.
Right.
Next year, you'll be a little more involved, and you won't be so much as a third party, but those are good observation, I appreciate that, and I agree with most of everything you said.
Yes.
So especially with the free cash and having it so slim with such a tight budget year.
Right.
And everything's budgeted to basically the penny, so not having that free cash makes it a little bit, but I can understand the point of our best practices for this year.
The other thing about free cash, it is as a point in time.
Right.
Right. And it was June 30th, 2018.
Eighteen, right.
And we know that there was property sale with a big slug of dough coming in.
Right, right.
This fiscal year.
Right. Which is good and bad.
That's right.
It's good and bad.
I would also argue that if you, if you pose the question to each individual on the stage, to define free cash, you would get 10 or 12 different answers.
Right. Yeah, so we have to do more education of the general population. But the good and bad thing, what I mean about the free cash, is we think we can keep living off this windfall every year, which is not a good thing.
That's right.
Because technically, we're not funding our operating budget properly, in my view.
That's right.
So, okay. Thank you for your insight. Any other questions on that?
No, thank you, Peter. Nice talking.
Old business, we have several board and committee vacancies. I'm not sure if we had a list. I thought these circled ones were the list.
No, so all I really wanted to do was just to have this in here where, I use this from the master plan, the 2018 master plan, is a crib sheet for me to see which committees were elected, which were appointed, the quantity of them. And that, we just included that in the package.
Right.
But the real meat of it is from Diane Lockwood.
Right.
Who has a database of various committees and appointed positions and so forth. And so, really included that in there for future perusal. Where, you know, the board is going to have to make some appointments because many of these are expiring. There are, however, some committees for which there are existing vacancies, and to the extent we can encourage and entice and invite people to join various committees to add value to the community, it's great for the town.
So at our next meeting, we'll have a complete list to read off, but in the meantime, I also have asked Peter to see if we can get that list in one spot, online, because I think sometimes people don't know where to look.
That's right.
So if we have it all in one spot, I think that would be helpful.
That'd be great. And I also spoke to the COA Director, just mentioning they had these vacancies, that she should pursue them, and see whether there may be some members in her community that she deals with on a frequent basis that may be interested, because we know that it's sometimes hard to get positions filled of volunteers.
Absolutely.
So, that's really all.
Really our volunteers, so.
That's right.
All right, very good. Thank you. Any other comments on those positions and vacancies? Selectmen's forum? Anybody?
I'm good, thank you.
Good?
Yep.
Good? Good? We're going to have a fast meeting. Ben's going to be sad she missed a fast one, right? No, no, no. Peter has quite the list under his section today, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Feel free to start.
Okay, so I added, I had a meeting with the Mass DEP in Worcester, and our Bob Ferrari came with me, or met me there, from Northeast Water Solutions. He's the system operator of the water treatment system at the Millville Elementary School. And the meeting was prompted by the fact that there was a non-compliance in last fall, and apparently in the first quarter of this year, as a measure of disinfection byproducts. And so, I really have to think back to my chemistry and geology classes, and it's difficult. So I'm not going to bore you with those details. I just want to say that the water has been testing quite well. There were some, there was basically, I don't know if the right word is a lapse, and there was just a period of time where there was more chlorine put in to eliminate the iron, it's iron-rich water, to get the iron and manganese out, and so it creates a byproduct. And that happened over some period of time when the monitoring by the system operator did, slipped, I guess is the way to put that.
Okay.
So, anyway, corrective steps have been taken in the system operation, as well as the monitoring. The bulk of the meeting, and it was a nearly three-hour meeting, was discussions between our operator, the systems operator, Bob, and the DEP engineers about, you know, what's going on, what happened, why they're maybe not happy, and what, you know, what steps should he's taking and so forth. And so they went through some great detail on that. I have some memos that are, you're welcome to see if you're interested. At the end of the meeting, the DEP has asked that the town provide a, an action plan of corrective actions on town letterhead signed by me. And so my plan is to provide that to you at our next meeting, so that it can be approved and submitted to the DEP in the first part of June.
Okay.
And in that, it will have basically short-term steps, which, most of which are being done, which is improved and enhanced monitoring and reporting by the operator. So right now, he's now submitting more frequent reports than required to the DEP, and they like that. In addition, there's a plan to flush, if you will, or clean out the pipes in the, they call it the distribution system. So within the walls of the school, after the treatment, there's pipes that are full of, maybe full of iron. So the steps during the summer to clear that out, so that the water, where they measure it is better, reads better, basically, less iron and so forth. The source of the water is iron-rich here.
Right.
You know, that's why they call it Ironstone Hill, or whatever, I guess, right? The near-term steps that would be in this report, in this action plan, would be to continue to evaluate whether there's additional technology to apply, or processes to perform better or differently. In addition, and then in the longer term, or in addition, part of the process is whether they're using a chlorine-based chemical, there's a potassium-based chemical that is also usable, but doesn't sound like that's the right solution for up here at MES. They also want longer-term solutions, and part of that is evaluating additional well possibilities, which has already taken place. That's something on the long term, we still may want to do, as well as other sources, such as from Oxbridge or Blackstone.
Right.
Coming to the school. They don't really care about feeding off of, to the downtown and so forth, but just to the school, whether that's feasible, what timeframe, and so forth. And then separately, they also want to get a sense that we would be looking for evaluating and developing funding sources beyond the taxpayers, so at the state level and the federal level.
That was my next question, is there any funded sources?
Because I think they have a sense that these taxpayers are, you know, not likely to step up on this one.
Right.
It could be a big ask, particularly if it's a pulling in water from another community.
Exactly, right.
And I'll just say on that, driving in in the morning, I go by a plant that's the corrosive treatment plant of Blackstone, and I finally figured out after having this session what that's all about, which is, they're treating the water to get rid of the iron.
Right.
So, you know, who's to say their water's.
Tough water supply in this area.
That's right. So it's a challenge. So, anyway, that's that. And like I say, there's memos and information that, to the extent you have trouble sleeping at night, you're welcome to ask me for, and I'll provide them to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item I had was transitional update. I just wanted to, you know, put that in there. Now, two weeks have passed here. I've been warmly welcomed by all, I'll just say that. It's a welcoming community. My observations are, you have very capable, hard-working people in this building, and throughout the community at the police department, at the highway department, and so forth. You know, clearly, the schools, I think, are doing a good job, but I haven't really gotten too much over there. I call Millville the hidden gem, where people go above and beyond. It's a neat community. I have had the opportunity to meet and greet with a lot of key players. Here, the first day was the superintendent I might have mentioned. I got a ride with the chief.
And the bike?
No. I didn't know whether I'd ride a bike, but probably not what I'm suited up.
There you go.
But the chief gave me a great tour of the town, and some of the, you know, the challenges he faces, and the opportunities, and so forth. And I told him it was the best tour of the town I've ever had. It was the first tour of the town I ever had. Then I went with Brian, he drove me around in the town's bigger truck.
Yeah.
And I, he also gave me a good update of that.
All the bumpy roads.
And the bumpy roads, and how he would, you know, treat, use his 50 grand, if he got the extra 50 grand, and things like that. And he showed me the facilities and the storage things up at the school, and it was, it was quite a tour. So that was even, an even better tour. I told him that was the best tour I ever had. But I basically lied to both of them.
Yeah.
I've met with the FinCon folks, I went to their public hearing, I, you know, provided a little input and background. I met briefly with folks here from the Board of Health. I got invited and went to the Council on Aging luncheon.
Nice.
And listened to the Elvis impersonator. I met Senator Fatman and Representative Souter.
Yeah.
And their aides, so I have direct links of communication with those guys. And they're very eager to be supportive of the town. I got out of there before anybody asked me to dance.
There you go. You're batting a thousand.
So.
They'll be waiting next time.
That's right. I have teed up, meeting with Aubrey tomorrow afternoon, hopefully if our schedule permits, just to sort of, you know, catch up and so forth. I'm meeting with Justin this week. I'm meeting with Justin this week. I haven't met him yet, you know, been back and forth on some things. Then I'll be doing the staff individually a little bit further here. So far, it's just more management by walking around and getting to know folks and they, hopefully they're comfortable with what I bring to the table. Jerry Finn's lining me up to meet with the superintendent of BVT, so look forward to that. And I'm speaking at the Memorial Day Parade, I'm the emcee.
I was going to say, I heard you have a big position that day.
I don't know exactly what I'm supposed to do, but I, I do have a sense of, besides whatever they want me to, I know, I have a rough sense of how I want to make that day.
So you can go play on the playground too after.
Yeah, you got it. In, in speaking to Senator Fatman, he called me and we talked a bit about various things. And one of the things he said, he earmarked 30 grand for the audit.
Okay.
And so we would expect to see money by the, about this time next year for reimbursing us for the audit. Not for a state doing an audit, but reimbursing us for an audit, okay?
For financial.
And so it's a financial audit. And I, you know, I've heard a lot in watching the videos of various meetings on this topic. You know, I don't know what many people know about what you get out of an audit. You get some satisfaction that somebody's looked at the, you know, the books and records and have provided disclosures. But, you know, the last time we got, you got this kind of a book. And I, I challenge anybody to read this without putting it down a few times and scratching your head.
Yeah.
In, in the town of Sherburne where I was, there was a drawer full of these, done every year. And I was probably the first person to have ever read any one of them. So that said, I, this was the first thing I asked for when I was doing a little due diligence on the town here. Because one of the things I like is where they get into the pension and OPEB disclosures. That tells you a lot about really what's out there, including the disclosures now report Millville's portion of the unfunded pensions of the teachers at the state level. That's a, very kind of remarkable information to know. As far as the town's nut, it's about half a million dollars on the OPEB side of the thing. So that said, I have, we, Bill had done a draft of a proposal, a request for proposals. From what I can tell from legal counsel, I'm still trying to confirm, based on our size and depending on how we do it, we could reach out to three firms rather than go through that bid process.
Right.
To get, you know, see what their interest level is. And I've reached out to the firm that we used when I was in Sherburne.
So the RFQ that Bill put together, I, I looked through it and it seemed like it might have been a little over the top for our size?
Yeah, I think so.
So, okay.
So I prefer to go the simpler way, the extent it's doable. The firm that I've reached out to and, and he's used the firm that he had reached out to briefly just to explore whether they had interest. So there's, I know there's at least two good firms that would, might be interested.
Okay, good.
And coming in and evaluating. Then the question becomes really, if we think about it, whether or not we want them to do June 30, 18, the year, the period ended as of June 30, 18, or the year ended even June 30, 19.
So I would-
Because of the timing of their schedules, they're not likely to get in here until late summer, early fall.
So we have to check with our covenants on the loans?
Ah, yes.
So I would think that would be a driver on that.
There you go. Good point. Okay. So that's, that's really all I had to say about that at this point. I am, as I, you know, I get a lot of stuff put in front of me to sign off on, so that, when I sign off on something, I like to ask questions. A lot of it relates to payments and so forth. So we're starting to ask, you know, get a better handle on some of that stuff. Not that anything's wrong, but it's more just, gee.
You want to know what your signature's on?
For instance, here's a, here's a $3,000 bill for transportation for some, one of these schools and why am I, or why is somebody here signing off on that? And are the amounts, you know, how do we get, so that sort of stuff.
So I'm glad you're asking the question, because I think some things have been done the same way for so long.
That's right, yeah.
And that's sometimes an issue.
And that's why they're still happening that way.
That's right. So I must suggest anything, it's done untoward or poorly.
Yeah.
It's just, gee, I, I can't sign off on that because I don't know what it's for.
Right.
Exactly.
You know, so it's that sort of thing.
Very good.
The park grant is in process.
Okay.
All right? So voters approve, then by, by that, I mean, I'm about to send information to the state. There are a bunch of forms that I've signed off, some notarized. It was back and forth with the person at the state that we deal with on that. And there was a question, because we haven't split the property and the agreement's called for the specific property, what do I do about that? So she, at first she said, well, that's a very good question. Came back to me and said, send it with the full acre.
Okay.
And we'll amend, there's two documents that it relates to in four that I have to send. And so we'll amend it once we do the split.
Okay. And they're okay with that?
That's what she suggested doing. Yes, that we would amend after the fact, just to get it in the pipeline quicker. So, so then we have, we, the town has to go forward and split the property. As part of that, because we own the property, from what I'm told from the planning folks, no, the assessing folks, I don't know about the planners, yeah, is that we need to have it surveyed.
Right. That's what I heard as well.
That's an incremental cost that I guess will come out of the professional services budget for here.
Right.
Which has been utilized a fair amount already for digging for tires.
Right, that was the 19 budget, yeah.
So, anyway, just saying that. So that's the next step. So we'll have to get surveyed and the complication is the septic might be under part of the parcel and then might be an easement type of thing that's required. So I just wanted to update you on that. Then I had item D. And this actually, I'll give credit to Dan Keyes, who's been doing this for a lot of years. He said, Peter, what he does after town meeting is he go, you go to the selectmen and you ask them for their goals. Ask them to send to you. So I'm asking you to send, I think it's a good idea. If you sent to me each and every one of you three to six core goals you would like to see accomplished in 2020, right?
Additional to what I already asked you?
Then I can compile them, right? I can compile them, basically come up with a, you know, sort of a six plus or minus type of a principal list that reflects everybody's input.
Right, so we can have an effective review in a year.
Well, and I'm not looking for that for a review for me necessarily. It's more, you know, helps make me understand the direction you all would like to go and be sure to go there. That's really what I'm more interested in than, you know, review is review, whatever. So, so I'm giving you a little bit of an assignment, I guess.
Okay, sounds good.
If I could. I do have one item that was, came through at 3:00 today and that's just, so I have it here because it's the 48 hours, not, not reasonably anticipated. EverSource just sent a notice that they are going to begin replacing existing wooden structures and hardware on selected poles along the electric transmission corridors of Blackstone Mend and Millville and Oxbridge. And their work is going to basically start in early June and go through the fall, but they're going to start some site preparation work immediately. And where they're doing it is on their right of way off of Kempton Street and Chestnut Hill Road. So they sent a, you know, some pretty pictures and description of the types of stuff they're doing. So I'll see about getting that on the website.
So how will that affect the community?
I, I don't know. They're just replacing poles, but so when somebody wonders, why is there this big, you know, caterpillar or something or other moving at 7:15 in the morning in my, you know, down the street there, this, this will be part of it. Because they're basically taking a, they're putting in big metal poles in, in place of some wooden ones. And I don't exactly know where that is yet, so. So anyhow, I just want to point that out to folks so they're not surprised if a big truck pulls up.
Beginning of June?
Yes, but they're starting to do site preparation work, which I presume means they'll probably cut down trees and move in some materials and maybe move in some equipment.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it?
Well done.
Wow. And that just leaves signatures for meeting minutes. Anybody, did you bring a copy of the minutes? I didn't get, I have to go back up to my folder because I grabbed my folder before they were put in there this weekend.